...as well, and that lawsuit should be finalized about April 10th, we believe. Uh, the Los Lomas was already, uh, two-thirds of it was in the Santa Clarita, what we call sphere of influence. Santa Clarita had zoned the land, uh, for R1 development. And that Los Lomas could only go back to LAFCO now and ask for about 150 homes in Santa Clarita and about 100 in the city of LA. That's all they can legally be entitled to in front of LAFCO.
That's assuming that there's no change in the zoning.
Well, they, the LAFCO laws state that zoning has to be done before they go to LAFCO. So either Santa Clarita City or Los Angeles City would have to change the zoning to accommodate them before they even get to LAFCO.
Well, so Councilman Smith, it sounds as if you think that this is pretty much checkmate as far as the Los Lomas project is concerned.
Yes, I think this is done, it is over, uh, Los Angeles County Supervisor said we don't want it. Santa Clarita City says we don't want it, and as of Wednesday, Los Angeles City said we don't want it. The only rights this gentleman has now is to build 247 homes.
Given that this does remain quite a bit of it within the sphere of influence of the city of Los Angeles, as well as you point out of Santa Clarita, what use do you think this land should be put to?
Well, I think 247 homes would be the maximum I'd want to see there. Uh, anyone who's ever looked at that corridor knows that the traffic impacts are just unmitigable. There, there's no way you can build anything of any significance there. Congressman Brad Sherman has a bill in Congress to create a rim of the San Fernando Valley Wildlife Corridor, which would preserve a good portion of the Los Lomas area forever as open space. That makes a lot of sense, quite frankly, because it really is the bridge that connects the San Gober Mountain to the Santa Monica Mountains. And that, that canyon area there is the natural bridge. It really needs to be preserved, I think, uh, forever, uh, for the ability of wildlife to move through the area as well, just to create a, a natural buffer between the two, the two big valleys, the Santa Clarita Valley and the Los Angeles-San Fernando Valley.
As someone who drives through that area from time to time, it occurs to me that you'd need, uh, it would be nice to have an additional wildlife corridor to either go under or over the freeway itself there.
Yes, and that's been a proposal that the Sierra Club and Congressman Sherman are looking at. Uh, there are some, there are some ways that wildlife can traverse underneath the freeway there now, and, uh, it's just not sufficient. So, anything that, that make it worse is not acceptable. Uh, but we're looking at, uh, making that better, and, and there are some opportunities to do that just a little further north, uh, where the freeway on-ramp is.
In their proposal, I had read the allegation, or at least the contention, that some of the lands that would have gone into this project actually has toxics, toxic materials in the soils themselves. If this project does not go forward, then presumably those toxics would not be mitigated.
That's probably true. Uh, depends on who takes possession of the land. If the federal government was to take it as part of the Wildlife Corridor, a federally designated area, they would have the ability, and really the responsibility of the owners of land to go in and look at that. No one really knows what's up there. Um, there's a little industrial use that's been up there over the years. I doubt that there's much in the way of contamination. It's just not really pretty land, but, uh, it, it's open spaces, really important corridor.
Another topic that came up that you were, uh, in the middle of as well this week had to do with solar panels. How's your own solar panel project going?
Well, my personal solar panel project is great. We turned it on about two weeks ago, and I have stood out every weekend, and I go out every, every morning and every night and watch the meter running backwards, just, uh, it's kind of thrilling to watch, if nothing else. Uh, and I've been kind of watching my meter usage the last two weeks, and it's been pretty much at zero. So personally, I love it. Um, the bill I introduced was to support a bill that, that, uh, State Assemblyman Levine has put in, that would allow local governments to, uh, help people that can't really afford to finance solar panels themselves, to do it through a city financing mechanism, and then apply it over 20 years on their, on their property taxes. So that anybody then could afford, anyone at least who owns property could afford to put solar in. And, uh, right now, it's really restricted for those that really are in good financial condition, or corporations, and that's not right.
Well, you've lived, I think you've lived in the same house for quite a while. You probably own it free and clear, so you, you, you could afford this.
That's right. Uh, the, well, we owned it free and clear up until the point we started to add on, and then, and then the banks having interest in it again.
But this is in the tens of thousands of dollars for a medium-sized home?
That's correct. My, my share of it would have been $19,000, and that's my share. The, the city of LA through, uh, DWP, uh, grants was picking up $26,000 of it. So, if I had paid for the whole thing, I wouldn't be doing it.
If this goes through the way you suggest that it should, and there are incentives for the rest of us to put solar paneling on our roofs, what do you think the overall impact would be within the city of Los Angeles?
Well, I think you see a tremendous reduction of our dependence as a city on, on power generation from sources that pollute. Um, we have converted a good portion of our, our, what we call our peak power generators to natural gas, which is cleaner burning. But we still have some older burning, uh, uh, plants online. In fact, we had a coal burning plant, which we just took offline two years ago as a backup plant. Uh, so we're trying to create as much clean energy as possible through upgrading of our, uh, our systems. But, uh, solar energy provides people the ability to just take themselves offline totally, and not impact the growth factor that's hitting the city of LA and all of, all of the United States, really, but particularly the Southwest. Our, our growth rates are, are outstripping our ability to produce energy. And here in California, we saw the devastation of that a few years ago, and we had the blackouts.
Well, I hope you'll be able to come into the studio and keep us posted as this project moves forward.
We will.
Very good. District 12 Councilmember Greg Smith, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
My pleasure, Jack.
Again, the council voted on Wednesday, March 19th, to halt review of the massive Los Lomas project, which essentially ends the development, and they vote to support a solar power financing plan for residents. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending March 21st, 2008. On behalf of Francisco Montano and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pope. Joey, thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
I have one emergency.
How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name's Danell.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the Watch Commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I'd be going nuts if this was my dog.
We're shooting at 7855, 7855, 200, disappearing from the park, on the park, in the child market. Suspect found in 55, last sight by 5:00, towards the park, taking his custody. Code 3.
7855, Roger.
All units, code 4, lift the Catalina suspect. Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department, this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Is this yours?
Yeah.
Let's go.
They take pride in what they do.
910, code 6, under every vehicle.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Deposit on the vehicle.
Roger. Plus like 2L deposit on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Thirty-two, thirty-nine.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 26th. We do have ten members here for our quorum. I'm Councilmember Eric Garcetti, joined by Richard Alakon, Tony Cardenas, Wendy Grule, Jose Wezar, Tom Labange, Jan Perry, Bill Rosendahl, Greg Smith, Jack Weiss, and Dennis Zein. We are broadcast live on Channel 35, and we want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35. We broadcast live and also rebroadcast in the evening. We're also available online at lacity.org and through your telephone by dialing City Council phone at 213-621-CITY. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alakon, Cardenas, Guruhan, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westensein, Garcetti, eleven members present and appall, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Zein seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All righty, Mr. Alakon moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
First order of business, Mr. President, are items, notes for public hearings, items one through eight, and they are all ordinances, and I believe twelve council members will be present today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold till we have twelve members. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items nine through twenty-eight. And number nine is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. That would leave us ten through twenty-eight.
And I believe on item number ten, there was a request by the city attorney to continue that matter to April first.
Is there any objection, colleagues, on item ten to continuing that till April Fools? We promise we'll have it. If not, go ahead and continue number ten. And on item fifteen, do we have a continuation?
Yes, there's a request to continue that to April 23rd.
Okay. Any objection to continuing that item, number fifteen, until the 23rd of April? Seeing none, we will continue that. Ms. Grule would like to call items twenty-four and twenty-five special. We'll call those for her. Other items, colleagues, this is nine through twenty-eight. Nine through twenty-eight, any specials? We've already had the public hearings on those. We do have cards, just as a matter of information, on twelve and fourteen and fifteen, on eighteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four, as well as twenty-seven and twenty-eight. If nobody wishes to reopen those hearings, yes, Mr. Smith?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six special for Mr. Smith. If nobody reopens those hearings, we will keep the hearing from committee, and we will take up the balance then. There needs to be a motion on item twenty-eight, is that correct?
Only on the communication.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and move that. And let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for considerations.
Is there any objection to consideration? Seeing none, well, those are before us.
That would leave item twenty-nine through thirty-eight. Items twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one are orders. Do you wish to hold those on the desk as well?
Yes, let's hold the ordinances on the desk. We also have cards from the public on item thirty-two, but that is, is that being withdrawn?
Yes, Mr. President, I believe there's a request from Mr. Rosendahl.
Okay, so without objection, to send that back to Arts Parks, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, we'd like to send it to Arts Parks and Health and Aging Committee to review.
If there's no objection, we'll send that to Mr. Labange?
Hear that again, please, Mr. President.
Absolutely, so ordered, and
Your ordinance.
We have a
Mr. Rosendahl, would you like me to try to have a committee meeting on the West Side, West Sepulveda somewhere, or would you want to have it City Hall?
Whatever works for you. It would be lovely, actually, to have
I'm looking at your staff behind you, and they're jumping. Okay.
We will figure that out.
We'll figure that out, Mr. Labange, but thank you so much for your leadership on this issue.
And next, any other specials, colleagues? We do not have speaker cards on any of those other items, so we'll go ahead and open and close the public hearings.
I believe there's a card on item thirty-seven.
I'm sorry, thirty-seven. You are correct, so we will call that special for Ms. Brewer. My apologies, number thirty-seven. And we have one for thirty-nine, but that is in the next batch, so with this batch, anybody else wishing to call item special? This is again, we have twenty-nine through thirty-one already called special to wait for twelve members. That leaves thirty-three through thirty-eight, besides thirty-seven, which has been called special. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the balance.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Zein?
Fourth with, please.
Okay, we'll do eleven and sixteen, fourth with, without objection. Okay. If we can recess the regular meeting, and if you can call roll for the special meeting, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Guruhan, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westensein, Zein, Garcetti, eleven members present and appall, Mr. President.
Okay, I'll call number thirty-nine special.
And this is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Yeah, we have card for that as well, and we will hear that, and if we can continue that into the regular meeting, please.
And that will conclude the special meeting.
Okay. We'll take up general public comment at this time. Want to invite forward our speakers. There's two minutes for each speaker to address the council. We have a clock there to help you guide your time, and code of conduct there for addressing the council. Michael Hubman is our first speaker. After Michael will be Renato Liva, I believe. Excuse me if I got that wrong. And if I could ask the council director your attention, and we will take public comment. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, counsel. My name is Michael Hubman, and I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. The other day, I was sitting in the conference room of United Coalition East Prevention Project on the corner of Sixth and Stanford in eastern Skid Row, also known as the Bottoms. Right outside the window, on the corner, the police had a middle-aged black man up against the window with his handcuffs and his nose against the glass. After a while, the police left, and the man remained. I went outside and asked him, "What happened?" He told me, "When the police pulled up in their car, they asked me if I was on parole or probation." He said, "I was obliged to say yes." He told me that without further interference, he was pushed up against the building and handcuffed. Then they interviewed him and ultimately let him go. None of us had put up with this kind of thing in our neighborhood, but this is Skid Row. This is, this just isn't right, using parole and probation to harass people just because they live in Skid Row. In the fall of 2006, the police at the direction of the city government came out with Safer Cities Initiative. They singled out a fifty-square block area known as Skid Row. They assigned a task force of fifty police officers to deliver law and order to this small section of the city. They issued over 10,000 nuisance citations, jaywalking, sitting on the sidewalk, and the like. They issued more of these nuisance citations than the rest of the city combined for that time. If you issue a nuisance citation to a homeless person, the next thing you know, they will not appear. They might not be able to pay the fine, and the next thing you know, they're on probation and being stood up against the building like the man on Sixth and Stanford. Naming this gentrification attack on poor people who have nothing and have no place to go, Safer Cities Initiative deserves a place right up there with George Bush's Clear Skies Initiative.
Thank you very much, sir.
Chief Bratton and his broken window policy.
Thank you. Time's up, but we very much appreciate, if you'd like to give anything else, you can give it to the Sergeant Arms. We'd be happy to look at the written testimony, and we thank you very much for your public comment today. Renato Liva is our next speaker? Is that right? Am I reading that? Or is it Lira?
Renato Lira.
Lira, sorry.
Good morning, I'm a city council member. This is my first time coming here to LA, the city council.
Welcome. Good to have you here.
The issues we're here, there's the reason I'm here. This goes for District Seventy, District Six, with Richard Alakon and Tony Cardenas. One of the things I'm really disappointed about you guys is that last weekend, we had our conference meeting about the schools. You know, we're getting some, they're going to be cutting some classes into our area, District Seventy, District Six, with regards of a summer high school, San Fernando High School, and different schools. You know, we see Arnold Sashanegar is trying to cut some schools. You know, we sent, we had a press conference those last weekend on Friday. We sent a letter to Tony Cardenas and Richard Alakon. We never saw them, our meetings. You know, they're really supporting about the schools, they're supporting about education. We never saw them. We need, we're asking all the city council, everyone, to continue supporting us to these issues. I barely come back. I was gone for ten years. I was in Las Vegas studying for school. Also, I am the first Latino Top Chef Champion of 2007. Coming back, you know, we need your support, guys. This is the time that it's cutting schools. We don't want students to be on the streets. We want someone to have education. This is a time to get together, unite this, this community, and not let our schools get down. It cuts some more damage. You know, there's other ways to find out. We want Tony Cardenas and Richard Alakon, all the city council members, to send a letter to Arnold Sashanegar, to get together, not to cut those budgets for the schools. That's really important for us. Yeah, I expect Tony Cardenas and Richard Alakon, our next meeting is going to be in two weeks. We're going to have it in front of San Fernando High School.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony today. Mr. Wezar?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to point for the record that the council has voted through a resolution that we voted on unanimously, voted against the cuts, proposed cuts by the governor on education. So we want to just make that clear, that we've all said very clear, it's unacceptable, and we're fighting in ways we can in Sacramento through city resources to fight those cuts.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Thank you for taking the lead on that, and that means for the general public, that becomes part of our general legislative program. So our lobbyists that are full-time in Sacramento have that as part of their agenda. Our next speaker is James Ota. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys and Sharon Brewer will be our next speaker before returning here. Good morning, Mr. Ota.
Morning, President Garci, and members of the city council. My name is James Ota, Ota Trucking, and Harbor Truckers for a Sustainable Future. Clean Air Act Plan that Mayor Baragosa proposed at the Board of Los Angeles to help clean the air, the diesel-polluted air, to help eliminate the issues that are related to the dirty air by replacing all pre-1989 trucks in the harbor on October 2008, and to make the independent truckers become employees. Cleaning the air, we all accept, and we'll do our part in helping to clean the air. With financial assistance, Portisgiving will help. The container fee that is going into the rate is to help to replace all these older trucks. It should be on all containers and no incentives for companies that start sooner than the rest. Instead of the retrofits on other trucks, the port's money should be for the replacement of all the existing trucks in the harbor since the beginning of 2012. All trucks in the, will be 2007 engines or newer. Concessions are for unions to get into the harbor by eliminating many of the harbor drayage companies, and the independent truckers to become employees. You have two unions in the harbor now, the office clerks and the longshoremen. Making the independent truckers become union will make all ports in the nation totally controlled by the union. Where is the incentive for all these truckers when they become hourly employees? But having independent truckers and all the existing drayage companies in the harbor working as they are now, the ports can grow as they have sense of deregulations. If you want to have some changes for the truckers, make the steam supply stop the store or deliveries, and have them be only port-to-port rates, and we can have the rates increased to benefit the independent truckers. Help eliminate all the long waiting lines that we are in with our trucks idling. Let us all clean the air, but without concession, and making the independent drivers become union drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ota. Appreciate your testimony. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker in Van Nuys. We'll come back to Arnold Sachs here in City Hall just after that.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Public comment, March 26, 2008, Persian New Year event, March 30, 2008, Sunday, four days away. This morning, I found out that the permit is not yet signed, and changes regarding Sunday's event could happen even on Sunday. This is year number five for the event at Lake Balboa. Why are there problems that need to be addressed four days before the event? As I stated before, this event is not good for the local community. I'm having to ask Recreation and Parks questions regarding Sunday's event, like closure, what parts of Lake Balboa, admission price, vehicle parking, hours of event, hoping that I will have these questions answered prior to the event. I have nowhere else to get this information. If this event was properly advertised in English at Lake Balboa and in the local papers, some of my questions would be answered. On Sunday, I, someone who lives in the community and regularly goes to Lake Balboa, will have to pay an admission fee, amount unknown, to a promoter who does not live in the community, so that I can go to Lake Balboa and check on the wildlife for any injuries. I was at a meeting last night where a comment from a city employee was made, like, "You don't want to be in the Sepulveda Basin on Sunday." This comment was made after a committee member said they had plans, planned a gathering by the wildlife area. The wildlife area is east of Woodley, nowhere near the Persian New Year event at Lake Balboa. This comment, basically, "Stay out of the Sepulveda Basin on Sunday," scares me. Is a disaster pending. Once again, the English-speaking public has no idea about the Persian New Year event on Sunday, March 30, at Lake Balboa, and if they've made plans to go to the park for a gathering or having a party, they will not be able to go in unless they end up going and paying a fee to the promoter. A part of the park will be free, but not the best part. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that is Matt Dowd.
My timer's already started, sir. Could you please reset it to two minutes? Thank you. Good morning, council members. Arnold Sachs. I just wanted to point out last week how interesting it was to be in the council chambers and listen to the discussions regarding Los Lomas, the development of Los Lomas. And when I looked at the Wednesday paper, there was an article with Steve Lopez, went out with Zev Yaroslavsky, and he was taking a tour of the city and complaining about the density bonus projects that the city is authorizing to allow high-rise condominiums and all kinds of changes to the density. So in the council chambers, we get the council complaining about the county's action to develop Los Lomas property, and then we have the county board supervisor complaining about the city's policies regarding height restrictions and the easing of them that allows high-rise condominiums. Furthermore, it was discussed that there might be some lawsuits based on the council's decision regarding Los Lomas. So I'd like to know, who stepped up from the city council when the Grand Avenue project was submitted? There was a lawsuit filed by the owner of the Bonaventure Hotel because of the density that was changed by the redevelopment, redevelopment agency, and the city was sued. City lost, but nobody knows how much they lost. Nobody stepped up to say, "Hey, wait a minute. You're going to change the density that's already there, but we won't sue. We won't, we won't do anything about it. We'll let the project go through." I'd also like to point out very quickly that there's a lot of discussion regarding the gangs, and the mayor's office taking over that program, and the fact that it would fall outside the reach of the auditor department. What happened with the LAUSD? The mayor's took over that program too. Does that mean it falls outside the auditor's reach? Thank you for your time, your answers, and your patience.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd. After that will be Chuck Tenen.
You know what? It's because the city attorneys are dumb, including this one and the leader.
Sir, if you could, please, we have, we have a request on the podium, and this is a first warning, to not make defamatory comments. Please give us your opinion on things and let us know. But if you're going to call names, then we are going to give you a warning. So please continue.
Allowed to say that's performance. They're acting like dummies. So that makes them dumb. Now, I'm glad he mentioned Los Lomas, because here's our latest communication to the city attorney. And I've got some copies here, but I've got one first for Greg Smith, because he understands what it means to give instructions to your attorneys, like I do to mine. And here's our instructions, and he's written to you through your attorneys. See, because they're telling you that you could lose the Los Lomas case, and he says you can win. Well, I'm saying you're losing this one, and the attorneys are saying that you can win, and it's a total loser. So here's Greg Smith's copy. One for Bill Rosendahl, because it's in his district. This is case law. Harry Perry, Garrettson, Fode, Nevada, all this First Amendment case law in our favor. One for Janice Hahn, because she's the brains of this outfit, I think. And one for Bernie Parks, because he was the police chief when Harry Perry won in the Ninth Circuit and the city of Los Angeles lost. LAPD was in trouble then, and they're in trouble now. They're under a federal consent decree. They don't want to touch Venice Beach anymore. And now your attorney says ordinance 6344 doesn't apply at the beach, so I just went and took a picture of a 6344 sign. And Mike Hunt is not here today. I'm sorry, Channel 35.
Chuck Tenen is our next speaker. Chuck Tenen is our next speaker.
Good morning, President Garsetti, city council members. The city of Los Angeles has a budget deficit. We all know that. It's cutting its city programs, mainly affordable housing programs that we need. There's a huge loss of city revenues coming from the issuing of permits for building, electrical and plumbing in condo and home rehabs. You need all three. Here's an alarming figure. 60% of the contractors in this city do not file permits, and their projects do not get inspected by the city. Each permit costs $100 to $200. The city doesn't enforce these policies or regulations. Now, four projects in CD2, Wendy Gruel's district, in my condo complex, four projects, three did not get permits or have city inspection, and it's unsafe. Mine did, because it's the city Affordable Housing Condo Rehab Program. You know, it's not all about how the city spends their money and has no money, but how do they, but that they don't collect the money that should be collected, and the city should protect what we have. The city continues its policy of not enforcing all the policies, and mainly not issuing of permits for building, electrical and plumbing, all three in need, in these condo properties that are being rehabbed, and it's not being inspected. I asked the inspector, go look. I don't want to do it. It's resulting in a huge loss of revenue that this city should be getting, and it's unsafe. And these contractors get away with it. You want more money, the city, collect it from those contractors. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Nice to see you today. That closes public comment. Madam Clerk, we do have 12 members present. Could we run through, oh, yes, Mr. LeBonde.
If I could right now?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome a very special family who came to Los Angeles for their great love of this city and the opportunity they provided. The Morda family from our sister city of Berlin, they live in the western part of the city. Please stand and be recognized by the city council. You can stand up, stand up, Eze. Okay, good job. And then what they also do is they specialize in special tours for European travelers to see the great southwest and Harley-Davidson rides Grand Canyon and the great Owens Valley and Central Valley. Welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBonde. Madam Clerk, have you, yes, Ms. Perry.
Fourth with?
Thirteen, did thirteen go forth with? If not, we will make sure it does go forth with. Thank you. If we could open the roll, just open the roll on the ordinances real quick, because we do have thirteen.
And Madam President, that would be items one through nine and 29, 30, and 31.
Great. Well, those are now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Those items been approved. I'd like to acknowledge our council president, Mr. Garsetti, on item number 39.
Thank you very much, Madam President. If we could open the public hearing on item 39, I know we have some folks that are here on opposed opposition to the SAVE Act. Mr. Zein, I want to thank you for your participation this morning and as a leader of our immigration efforts throughout the country at the National League of Cities. But with that, be happy to open up the, the public comment. Thanks.
Great. I'd like to call the following individuals, Nancy Ramirez, followed by Judy Feldman, followed by Jaime Rappaport, and Matt Dowd.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Ramirez, and I'm the Western Regional Counsel for Maldef. A Maldef urges you to vote in support of Council President Garsetti's resolution to oppose the SAVE Act. Maldef opposes SAVE because it will militarize the border, it will increase discrimination against Latinos, and it will support anti-immigrant groups, and it will promote coordination between local police and federal immigration officials. SAVE requires all U.S. employers to use an employment verification system that is seriously defective. Potentially 240,000 legal workers could be found ineligible to work under the flawed system. The measure would lead to increased discrimination against Latinos and anyone who appears foreign-looking or has a foreign-sounding name. In addition, it increases local police enforcement, federal immigration laws, and we all know that that makes for bad policy, as it will deter immigrants from coming forward to report crimes. The need for comprehensive immigration reform remains, and we urge you to vote in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Judy? Good morning, Judy.
My name is Judy Feldman. I'm here today on behalf of the Anti-Defamation League. The ADL has been fighting hatred and bigotry for over years, over 90 years. As an organization with unique expertise and perspective in civil rights and law enforcement areas, ADL actively advocates for a comprehensive approach to immigration that will serve America's security, humanitarian, and economic interests. The SAVE Act flies in the face of these efforts. This legislation will play an unproductive and damaging role in addressing our country's broken immigration system. In order to be effective, immigration reform must be, must go beyond the deportation approach, deportation-only approach, which the SAVE Act embraces. We must find a way to craft legislation which combines tough enforcement with practical and realistic solutions for undocumented workers and their families. The SAVE Act masquerades as an economy-improving measure. In reality, this legislation relies on utilizing an employment verification system that is deeply flawed and can lead to discrimination, profiling, and intrusion of privacy against not only undocumented immigrants, but also U.S. citizens and legal immigrants. We are also gravely concerned about the effect that the SAVE Act will have on the ability of local law enforcement to work closely with the community to ensure their safety. Shifting responsibility from the federal agents to local ones gravely interferes the ability of local law enforcement to work in partnership with the community. Out of status persons and their families will be reluctant to seek police protection, report crimes, or serve as witnesses if they fear they will be deported for doing so. The SAVE Act continues our country's pattern of passing short-sighted Band-Aid solutions for a problem that desperately needs a comprehensive solution. By passing the resolution to oppose the SAVE Act, you send a strong message that communities are ready for a comprehensive and lasting solution. The Anti-Defamation League is working hard to send this message in Washington, D.C., and across the 30 regions we serve. And we in Los Angeles believe this city should lead the nation in the fight for immigrant rights and fair treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I think it's Jamie.
Yes, it is Jamie. Thank you. My name is Jamie Rappaport. I'm here today representing Progressive Jewish Alliance, and I'm here to add to the many voices in support of the resolution that's before you to oppose the SAVE Act. I'm representing an organization of many individuals who feel deeply connected to the issue of immigration, because our parents and grandparents were immigrants who came to this country to work hard and for a better life, just like today's immigrants. I won't go into the many reasons that we oppose the SAVE Act. I think that my colleagues have gone through that, through those reasons, and we agree with all of them. But I'd like to urge you to pass this resolution in opposition to the SAVE Act, which can only help our nation's immigrants and our city's immigrants and security for our country. As a harsh enforcement-only bill, the SAVE Act undermines the important efforts that we've had to move forward on comprehensive immigration reform, and that honors the hard work of immigrant families while maintaining the security of our country. So Progressive Jewish Alliance urges you today to pass this resolution in opposition to the SAVE Act, so that we can urge Congress to get back to the important work of pursuing comprehensive immigration reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd, followed by Eli Lippman. Matt Dowd? Okay, Eli Lippman.
Thank you, Council President Garsetti, for bringing this resolution forward. Thank you, Councilwoman Gruel, for chairing this meeting. Many of you may be asking why there's so many Jewish organizations here today. Well, in 1906, the AJC, the American Jewish Committee, was founded because we had a concern about Russian immigrants coming to this, this country. And we have been involved with immigrant rights issues from the beginning of, on the founding of this country. And our community may not be affected now, but we don't believe that this is a Jewish issue. We don't believe it's a Latino issue. We don't believe it's an Asian-Pacific Islander issue. This is an American issue. And we need to stand up as Americans and, and fight for those in this country that don't have as strong a voice as us. AJC supports strong, fair, and effective enforcement, coupled with humane reforms that protect families, ensure workers' rights, and end marginalization of immigration communities. The SAVE Act is not that solution. It compounds dysfunction on our current system. It creates a flawed syst, two wrongs, two wrongs don't make a right, and that's what this bill would do, would compound two wrongs onto, to try and make a right. It undermines our national security. It would drastically affect those here in this city that are here to protect and to serve us. The local law enforcement, that we don't have enough people on the streets right now to support, would be forced to enforce our immigration laws here in this city. We do not want this bill. It is bad for employers of this city, who will be forced to, to check employer, employer records. It will be bad for employees in this city, and it'll be bad for the local law enforcement in this city. Again, I reiterate, this is not a Jewish issue. This is not a Latino issue. This is an American issue, and I urge your yes vote on this resolution to oppose the SAVE Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. That closes public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garsetti.
Thank you again, Madam President. And I know you're a fan of, of the groups that came before us as well, but I want to thank Maldef and Chirla and ADL, AJC, Nakasek, PJA. I like that. I'm going to call you Jaime from now on, if you don't mind. It's good. It's good street cred. We, colleagues, we are a nation of laws and a nation of immigrants, and we must be smart about both. We must say that we, here in a city where 43% of our population is foreign-born, where if you go back one generation, it's more than 60% are either foreign-born or their parents, that we stand for sensible and for humanitarian immigration policy. Mr. Zein, who seconded this, as I mentioned, has been a leader at the national level of bringing cities together. But today, we're considering a resolution putting the city officially on record in opposition to the SAVE Act. The problem with the SAVE Act is not that it's, in its heart, something that isn't an important law for us to be able to have, but it takes a flawed pilot program with a verified already documented flawed database and puts in jeopardy millions of employers and workers who are here, who are here acting legally. It would require employers to use an inaccurate database to verify an immigrant's legal status, and because the act relies on this flawed database, it would be extremely detrimental to the employers and families of legal residents who might be incorrectly identified as being undocumented. They haven't even fixed that before pushing forward with more. The SAVE Act also would require local law enforcement to enforce federal immigration law, taking them from focusing on violent crime and building safer communities. We need comprehensive immigration reform in our country. Unfortunately, the SAVE Act is not that. Each one of us see in our economy here locally, especially with the downturn, the importance of us not having a climate of fear across our employers. I've talked to a lot of business leaders, the Chamber of Commerce, I met with last week on this, and they're saying that they have real, real fears about this. They are coming out increasingly forceful against this SAVE Act. And just so you know the status, there are 181 signatures out of 218 that they need to bring this to the floor of Congress. And unlike the usual rules of Congress, are going through committee vetting this in a politically charged presidential year, they're actually trying to circumvent the usual rules of the House of Representatives and bring it straight to the floor without any deliberation. That is only, they need 218 votes, that means that they are only 37 people away from that happening. Our local legislators have been great, Javier Becerra, our leadership in the House and others in opposing this, but it is important for us to make this stand, and as Mr. Zein is leading nationwide, have a clarion call from all of the cities of this country, that we need a strong economy, we need a nation of laws, and we recognize that we are also a nation of immigrants. I ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garsetti. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Zein and Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. Zein could go before me if that's.
Mr. Zein.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weisar. I just want to echo comments of Council President Eric Garsetti. Los Angeles has signed on to the National League of Cities Comprehensive Immigration Reform Package, and it can be accomplished. And it's interesting to see the variety of groups that are here today speaking on this. If you look at America, you look at Los Angeles, we are a diverse community, a diverse country, a diverse society. And to do one aspect, enforcement only, it's unrealistic. When you have 12 to 14 million people in the United States that are in that category as declared illegal, where many of them entered legally, many of them expired visa, many of them took a job and they're no longer in that capacity. Many of these people entered this country through the legal process, and now they're declared illegal. This negative enforcement is not what America's about. When you look at the National League of Cities position, which is now their policy, which cities across this country support, comprehensive immigration reform. We're not saying it's not important. We're not saying immigration can't be enforced. We're saying you have to have a comprehensive package. And it does not mean going into neighborhoods, loading up people on buses, and shipping them on an airplane to another country. That is not the American way, not the American spirit. What we want to do is a plan. We've been to Congress, I have testified in Congress, the National League of Cities has the board policy on how to handle this, and if it wasn't for partisan politics, we would have a comprehensive immigration reform package, and it would be a humanitarian package. This particular proposal, SAVE Act, does nothing except divide communities, divide families, and it's really, if you think about America, what it was founded on, the 13 colonies that broke away to form a place where people would have safety and have sanctuary, it's totally against the premise of America. So I join my colleague Eric Garsetti in opposing this and ask our congressional representatives and our leaders of the national level to come together for a comprehensive enforcement, comprehensive package that is done in a humanitarian fashion. But when you can get different ethnic groups, and that's what NLC is, National League of Cities is different ethnic groups, elected officials, Latino, African-American, Middle Eastern Asian, you name it, and they are there. And this task force that I was very honored to lead represented all of America. We have the package, we have the plan, we just wish the federal representatives would follow it, and we could put this to rest in a humanitarian package. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Madam President. And first, I want to thank Mr. Zein and Mr. Garsetti for your leadership on this, and thank the people who came on and spoke on this. You know, this council has been on record already supporting comprehensive and sensible immigration reform that's very much needed in this country. And what I also like to propose is that we support policies that focus on issues and not people. Unfortunately, what we see coming out of Washington, D.C. these days are that people are making or proposing policy in immigration based upon their images, perceptions, and dislike toward a group of people, rather than thinking sensibly, practically, about what makes sense to bring some sense to our immigration policies. And so this itself is one of the legislations that we've seen come out of D.C. that we should certainly do whatever we can to oppose. It reminds us of some of the earlier legislation that we saw that was criminalizing folks for simply of who they are and not necessarily focusing on whether it was sensible to go in that direction or not. So I thank my colleagues for bringing this up. We have to do all we can as a city to make sure that we are making policies here in the city and in the federal government that is sensible and not focused on a group of people simply because of who they are or the dislike that some may have against them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. You know what I'm so proud about Dennis Zein is, is that he's a moderate Republican, and what I'm so proud about Eric Garsetti is he tends to be more of a liberal Democrat. This is not a Republican or Democrat issue. It is not a liberal or conservative issue. It is a people issue. And I am absolutely ashamed that anybody would want to go forward in Washington with any kind of a legislation that tears up the families in our great city and in our great nation. We know that over 40% of the people in the county are immigrants. We know that the children are from families that some are immigrants, some have been here, and it's just insane. It's a bogus issue. It's what we call a old red herring issue. It's to divide people rather than unite people. We need to create a path to citizenship, period, for those that are here. Sure, illegal immigration. Why are they here illegally? Because we are the nation that there are jobs in. People send their money back to their home countries to help their economies there. The ideal solution is to create good jobs all over the planet, so people don't feel they have to migrate to the United States. But we have multinational corporations that pretty well run the planet and, and make all the economic decisions for the nations and cause a lot of these issues. So I just applaud our council here taking a more positive position, basically saying that let's deal with, with the issue in a positive way, let's, let's find paths to citizenship, let's work with our borders, and let's work with our people in all of our cities. And for God's sake, we can't continue to divide and deflect America from the real issues that we need to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Alicon?
Yes, I just want to join my colleagues in, in supporting this resolution. That Secure America Through Verification and Enforcement Act of 2007 is nothing more than a cover-up for a failed immigration policy on behalf of the federal government and under the guise of, of preventing terrorism. I don't think there's anybody in America who really believes that immigration from Latin America is producing, producing terrorists in our society. The terrorists who actually did attack our country came from elsewhere, and they did so with driver's licenses and a whole bunch of other kinds of. so with driver's licenses and a whole bunch of other kinds of identification. So do we need to improve our immigration program in the United States of America? I don't think anybody would disagree with that. Absolutely. We have 12 million people who have come here and who have lived here, who work here, who are raising their children here, and who we have allowed to be here. And that's the myth that the federal government is trying to shoot down. The fact is, the federal government has been complicitous in allowing this to occur. And instead of dealing with the reality that they have created, they are trying to mask it by using a political tool and trying to extend their losing careers by championing this as their immigration program. This is not only disruptive to families, it's also disruptive to the economy. When they're shutting down locations that, of the workplace, then we bear the ramifications of kids who are unsupervised from their parents, as well as jobs that are lost to our community and not producing good consumer activity. And certainly, we need that right now. So I commend all my colleagues for taking this position, for not sticking your finger up into the wind and testing the political winds and making a decision that I believe is heartfelt, and this is the right thing for Los Angeles to do. Our LAPD needs to spend more time, even though they're not doing the enforcement specifically, they need to be focused on their job of enforcing the law. It's not as if we can afford to use them in this activity when we can certainly use them to do other things. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members on the queue, Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes, 1 no.
Thank you. That item is approved. Thank you. I think the next items are 24 and 25. Mr. Zine, if I could ask you to take the chair for me for a moment, please.
Okay.
And those items were called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you very much. The two items we have before us, colleagues, and just want to take them both together because they're both transportation items. Item 24, that I know Mr. Rosendahl has been a big supporter of well, is an update on the progress of our Wilshire-only bus lane. As most of you may have heard, the Federal Transit Administration has ranked this project higher than any other project in the last five years. We've been awarded $23.3 million, which will allow us to build a bus-only lane on Wilshire Boulevard, upgrading the transit priority system, repairing curb lanes, issues I know Mr. Labonge has critically been involved with between Fairfax and Western, and to make other improvements on the corridor. This project has been in the making for a very long time. As the busiest street in our city with the highest transit use, we are not a moment too soon. Bus lanes have the ability to make transportation and transit more reliable, faster, and more active to the transit population that are dependent and the discretionary riders. We need to target those discretionary riders to get them out of their cars, onto transit, if we are able and want to relieve traffic in our city. What we will be doing as well, and I sat down with the Bus Riders Union and others, we've sat down with MTA, our Department of Transportation, and we've talked about looking at additional bus lanes in the city. And I'll be introducing a motion to say where else can this system work in the city of Los Angeles. We've seen with the orange line, which has been incredibly successful, 26,000 people a day ride that orange line. And so I want to thank DOT, Metro, the staffs of CD 5, 11, and 4, and the Bus Rider Union for their hard work and persistent in making this project a reality. I'd also like to make a technical correction, which amends the recommendation to approve the agreement between DOT and MTA, which has been provided to all of us here today. So it's, what it does say is a proposition, I think it's being walked in now, so I think we do have it on your desk. And so I would ask for an I vote on this item. Ms. President.
Mr. Labonge.
And that's on 24, and then we'll go to 25.
Okay. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much.
You like that French pronunciation?
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Is there any staff in the council chambers to speak to this issue? I'd love to hear staff.
As staff, please come forward to the center table.
Ms. Jackson, you're so good for the Department of Transportation. Why don't you sit there, too? You ever sat there before, Ms. Jackson? Come on, Ms. Jackson, you're good.
There's three chairs there, Ms. Jackson.
Just a quick question, so you know, timeline, funding is mentioned, and then also, I have a middle school there, John Burrows Middle School, and I want to know if we could create a possible bump out, an inlet for the, you know, how sometimes you widen the street a little near a school so you don't obstruct the buses from parking the school buses? That's at McCadden and Wilshire. But timeline, funding.
Khan Wu is LADOT. The timeline for this project, the Federal Transit Administration has given the preliminary approval. The money from the federal government will not be available until October 2008. And given two, three months delay in the process, we expect the money to come from the Fed by January of 2009.
And you're with the LADOT?
Yes.
Who's from engineering?
We don't have anyone from engineering today.
Because basically, the concern I have, we want to make a bus-only lane, is that what we're trying to do here?
That's correct.
Now, right now, we have a bus-only lane, but if you've been to the Observatory in your time in Los Angeles, you ever see those pictures of the Mars? You know, there's big, giant potholes. The constituents of mine and Mr. Westons are very upset because basically you can't use the curb lane now, so when would there be some improvement on the street?
Well, as part of the package, there's $11 million allocated to repair the payment. So that would be part of the project.
When would that be? Does that mean October this year you're going to start, like October 1st, or you think it's going to be the 10th of October, or 9th? When would it be? How soon?
I would expect the early 2009 that work can start. Of course, it's also pending upon the environmental assessment.
Are we going to wait to do any of that environmental assessment till we got the money, or what do we do now?
We're working with MTA to start the environmental assessment as we speak. We are getting a consultant on board to go through that process. So we want to do that before the funding becomes available.
Okay. Just a question I want to ask, a friendly amendment. I'd like the City Clerk's office to direct, how many claims has the city received between Western Avenue and La Brea Avenue on Wilshire Boulevard due to the terrible condition of the curb lane caused by the heavy MTA buses, 4,000 a day, that destroy the curb lane, which is right there? I'm all for this, but it destroys the curb lane. And this is only the peak hour restriction in the other areas, right? It's not a full-time restriction?
Peak period.
That's correct.
Peak period. But this is all time. You can't park there now between Highland and Van S. So this would do that. Madam Clerk, do you understand what I need? So I want to know, because, you know, people do hurt themselves or their vehicles because of the horrible condition of the street. And some years ago, I fought for $10 million, but another chair of another committee, of another part of the council was able to, I think, borrow that money before I could use it to get this fixed. He's laughing, but you can't hear him laugh. But it was for a good project, but we got to fix Wilshire Boulevard if we're going to do it. The 725 bus comes down there, and other buses, 4,000 a day, is horrible. So I got a friendly amendment. We got a second to the friendly amendment. Second to the friendly amendment.
Who seconded this friendly amendment?
Wendy Gruel.
Wendy Gruel, okay.
And I think the City Clerk would second it, too, if she had a vote here.
Give me a vote.
She'll take a vote. She'll take a vote. She's up here.
Larry Green does, too. Thank you.
She's auditing Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, go all the way to Fairfax on that because of the tar pits and the impact on claims against the city due to the horrible condition of Wilshire Boulevard, north and south side.
It is the Miracle Mile, Mr. Labonge.
It is, and it needs a miracle to fix it.
Well, it was a miracle.
And I'm trying to perform one.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me say a few things. First of all, let me ask you a couple of questions. We grabbed a couple hundred grand, MTA grabbed a couple hundred grand, we have $400,000 to do this study, correct?
Yes.
And how long will it take? I hope we could do it in six months. Can we do, I know you said a year in the committee.
Well, we feel that it does take 12 months to go through the process because of the public outreach efforts that we will have to do. There are some community already expressed some concerns about the traffic impact, and we do have to clear all this process before we can get this project approved.
The initial schedule calls for five months for the environmental assessment, and then another seven months for a public outreach along the entire corridor.
Yeah, here's my hope, because I believe in bus-only lanes, and I am thrilled that we provided the leadership, Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Labonge, and myself, and others in this council, to get the federal government to come through with $23 million. We're thrilled about that. And with the bus riders, 100% on this project. This is a relief effort. This is something that will work now. We've had it with Gridlock, the city. It's over the top. The real projects like Subway to the Sea, the Expo Line, the Green Line, all of these things are hundreds of millions and billions of dollars and lots of years away. The first thing we need to do is improve our buses, have more of them, have more rapid buses, and have bus-only lanes. We love the idea of the Wilshire bus-only lane, and we want to move it as quickly as we can conceivably do, even as much as I also want a rapid bus on Venice Boulevard. I want to come to downtown on a bus. I can't now. It's a milk run on Venice Boulevard. Take me an hour and a half to get here. It's insane. So MTA is working with us for a bus, rapid bus on Venice. We're thrilled. But this bus-only lane on Wilshire is a no-brainer. And so whatever we can do to expedite the process with both the community and the EIR, the happier I can tell you, everybody will be. And we appreciate your leadership on this, and obviously, as Ms. Gruel has said, it'll come back to the committee and we'll have updates and reports. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Gruel.
Close. Colleagues, the document is before you, item 24, which we will be adopting, which is the agreement between the MTA and the city of Los Angeles. And for Mr. Labonge, part of the EIR will be reviewing those issues, and that the important thing to note here is that we pushed really hard for this to be expedited. If we had not applied for these funds, we would not have the ability to repair some of that street. And that this is, I can't remember the figures, but I think they weren't even going to start until 2013. And this really is our opportunity to move it forward. And I know, Mr. Rosendahl and I believe very strongly, that expediting of the environmental review is quickly as possible within the parameters of appropriate environmental review, but we want you to let us know if there are any glitches in moving the process forward. And we do realize that the buses have caused major damage on that street, and part of the problem why buses sometimes go in and out because of the bumps, as cars do as well, from not only potholes that have been created, but the fact we can't keep up with it for the buses. So this is going to be an important aspect to the city's transportation system. This is going to allow us to move quickly, the $200,000 the city's put in, the $200,000 MTA to actually get this moving. So thank you to DOT for your efforts on this, and ask for an I vote. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Okay, that matters up. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And Mr. Alakon.
Yes, Mr. President, for the purposes of introduction, I'd like to introduce the council to the Fenton Elementary School Charter School, who is here. These are fourth and fifth graders.
Why don't you all stand up? Stand up. Stand up, take a bow.
And they're here learning about government. This is one of the first charter schools in Los Angeles, and I can tell you, it is one of the best charter schools in Los Angeles. I'm not saying that just because the kids are here. I've done a lot of work on education, and I can tell you, this is one of the better schools in my district, and certainly one of the best charter schools ever created. Their director is Irene Sumida, who I've known for many, many years, and also, one of their students is our colleague Tony Kardanis's student, so he has a particular affinity to Fenton Avenue Charter School as well. So thanks for being here, and I hope you get a lot of knowledge about city government so you can help us in the future.
Mr. Kardanis.
Thank you. I promised them if they would be quiet and walk in a single file line, we would bring them through the council floor, and we did. And I just wanted to tell you, you did a perfect job. We really appreciate you coming to your City Hall. We hope you enjoy it. You are the leadership of your class, but at the same time, remember that every single one of us were students like you one day, and so when it comes time, you're going to have to fill one of these seats. So remember what you learned here today, and do your best in school, and the sky's the limit. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And students, enjoy your day at City Hall. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 25 is still on the desk. That's Councilmember Gruel.
Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you.
After that short intermission.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Colleagues, item 25 is bus advertising. And many months ago, I proposed allowing advertising on our Dash and commuter express buses, and we were met with great skepticism, I have to say, from the department. I love to give you guys a hard time, Jim, so just so you know. But they really have seen that this can be a money producer for the Department of Transportation and particularly for the funds that we use to provide our transit services. And today, the department is reporting revenue far in excess of what was anticipated. That's right, originally, we had anticipated $187,000, but our share for the first year was $436,000, 355. And so we'd like to thank the department, and I keep telling them that I don't really want to say I told you so, but we did, and, yeah, Greg's with me on that. But I think we expect this next year, working with the contractor, to exceed our expectations by over 200%. And we're going to see that. The department has been working very creatively on how to ensure that we allow for advertising at the same time, which the department was concerned about, and others, protect our environment and not have too much advertising that takes away from our transit systems. And so today, our department is working on a proposal to increase revenues by nearly $400,000 by using King ads on the sides of our buses. And in this year of short budgets, or budget shortfalls, we need to look at creative ways in which to deliver our services to Angelenos. And so I'd like to thank the department for their efforts on this and their creativity on expanding the way in which we can do that. And I know that we're looking at other departments at the same time to see where we can be creative on creating revenues so we don't have to cut some of the services that are so critically important. So I just wanted to let you know some of the good news that we have and increases in revenue that we're seeing with this bus advertising. So thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
You're welcome. So we're going to open that for the roll? Mr. Labonge, I'm sorry, I didn't see you come up.
That's okay. I just want, is there someone for the department here?
Jim Leptin.
Just want to ask a question. A wrap is what they put around a bus. You see them like on a movie premiere. What is a wrap? Do you know what the funding, that is, what is the?
A wrap is when we finish the meeting.
Jim Leptin with the Department of Transportation. A wrap, you may see some of the Metro buses that are running around, are basically a decal that envelops the entire bus, sides and back. And we are exploring that possibility for our commuter express and dash buses as well.
Is that included in this, or no?
No, that's just including our current contract for the rear of the buses only. But as Councilmember Gruel mentioned, we're moving, starting Monday, with a program to include advertising on the sides of our commuter express buses, which will probably double the amount of revenues that we're currently getting today. And then we'll also explore other.
Do we have any public service space on those?
We do reserve a certain amount of space for public service announcements, and we'll be doing some of that in the coming months.
Good. I think it's important to make sure they keep messages. Do you have a committee that oversees the public service?
The department, the department basically works with the contractor to do that, yes.
Maybe Mr. Miller or the CIO, I'm just saying, on the advertising for the public service on the buses, maybe someone could look at it, whatever our big themes are, whether it's water conservation, whether energy conservation, whether it's visit the zoo, or child safety, car seats, whatever it is, have a committee of three or four of them oversee that to make sure we get our messages out. Thank you, Ms. Gruel, for your leadership on this. I remember, I think I was on the committee when this started, and you tied it all together. It took a long time because it had a long time to get to. But, yeah, it was quick, but it was a long time since it got to there.
Mr. Labonge, is that a wrap?
That is a wrap.
Okay.
you tied it all together. It took a long time because it had a long time to get to. But yeah, it was quick, but it was a long time since it got to there.
Mr. Labonge, is that a wrap?
That is a wrap.
Okay. That matter then before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 26, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith?
This has been answered. I suggest we approve it and ask it to go forthwith.
All right. Let's open the roll on that. Close it, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. And also number 39, forthwith. There's been a request on that, 39, forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item's item 37, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Number 37, and that is Out in the Valley, Sharon Brewer. To the Valley, Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, item number 37, special event fee waiver relative to the 2008 opening day event on March 31st. Fees and costs absorbed by the city, $4,500. This has to do with the L.A. Dodgers' opening day. And my question, or what I think needs to happen is, instead of the city picking up the tab for sports events, let them have some kind of surcharge that is included in their admission, because I know probably hundreds of thousands of people go to these events, and let them pick up the tab, and they're able to then go and take that surcharge and use it to pay for street closures, which this involves, or any other issues that have to do with the event. Also, since I had to leave, I couldn't wait two and a half hours to do public comment on item number 22, special event fee waivers. I just want to quickly do, there were seven total, 13 with amounts.
I believe she's off topic on this agenda item.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brewer, on this matter?
The city has a budget problem, and they continue to go and waive fees where fees don't need to be waived. The Dodgers cannot certainly afford to go and pay the $4,500. Sorry, city attorney. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Madam Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, you need to take a vote on that.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Matter's approved. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and referral.
Their excuse is on the desk. Councilmember is requested to be excused May 13th for personal business that meets council policy.
That's approved without objection.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, April 23rd, to arrive at 10:30 for personal business that meets council policy.
Approved without objection.
And that clears the desk.
Any announcements? Mr. Labonge?
The American Red Cross on the fourth floor is having a connecting, a blood drive today. So everyone in the sound of my voice here in the city hall complexes, please come and join the American Red Cross in the much-needed blood drive.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Any other announcements? Adjournment motions? Everyone, please stand for adjournment motions. Mr. Labonge?
A very special person, the wife of retired longtime legislative assistant Bill Pruner. His wife, Bess Pruner, just passed recently on the 20th of March at the age of 83. Bess was born in the month of May in 1924 in Pennsylvania. After working in Washington DC and San Francisco, she moved to Los Angeles, getting a job here with our city. She was a city paymaster for 25 years until she retired in 1984. Bess enjoyed celebrating her Hungarian heritage, traveling and collecting Native American Indian jewelry. She loved to cook and bake it at least once a week. Bill came home with trays of various pastries and cookies that Bess had made, including her legendary lemon bars. And I'm sure our city clerks will remember theirs as well. Bess is survived by her husband of 45 years, Bill, and nieces and nephews. And I would just like to say, there was nobody like Bill and Bess Pruner, and they were wonderful employees of Los Angeles. I'm so sad that Bess passed because Bill, that was his rock. So that's adjourned in memory, all of us. Bess Pruner. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon?
Yeah, Bill was, I know, Bill was, when I chaired the Public Works Committee, he was the staffer assigned to that committee. And I can tell you, he's just a great guy. I know he's still driving his Mustang. I forget what year it is, but it's at least 40 years old. But I'm very sad that he's lost his wife, who I don't recall. But I know that Bill was absolutely reflective of those silent city employees who are so dedicated day in and day out, who take the shots in the press quite often for being bureaucrats, but who really hold this city up and help us. When the chips are down, people don't mind calling the bureaucrats to come help in an emergency. And Bill, and I'm sure his wife, Bess, reflect that as well as any other city employee. So I'm sad to hear for Bill's loss, and I'd like to join you on that adjournment.
Any other adjournment motions? That concludes our meeting. We will reconvene. Oh, roll call. Thank you. That concludes our meeting. We'll return on Friday, the 28th. Have a good afternoon.